Thank you, everybody. Hello and welcome. It is Wednesday, December 21, 5:00 PM, shortest daylight day of the year, I think, right? And we are expecting Ron, I believe, so he may come in, but we already have a forum with Neil is here and myself and Larry, Nat and Kay is on Zoom. Here is, we just started, you missed nothing. Except your introduction. Except your introduction. First of all, I want to thank people for allowing me to change the date. I know it's a little disruptive sometimes, but normally the date for the meeting is a week from now. Just so everyone knows why we did it between the holidays, between Christmas and New Year's, lots of people are moving around. So I thought we'd get better turnout, both applicants and from the board by moving forward. I realize it's Hanukkah, so I'm sensitive to that, but people here on the board and the applicant, Mr. Loffler particularly didn't seem to mind. So thank you, Mr. Loffler, and thank you, board members. I just wanted to move things forward without people being delayed by another month. Minutes, do people have a chance to look at the minutes? And if so, if you're happy with them, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes. All right, moved by Ron, second by Larry, all those in favor? Public comment section, if there's anyone in the public who wanted to speak, I don't think there is tonight, but this is where they could do it if they wanted to. There's no one on Zoom, so we'll pass through that. Public hearing. For Stephen Loffler, 152 Hampton Street, proposed construction of an addition to a commercial building requiring site plan approval under sections 300-14.3, 300-14.7 of the Stack Harbor Village Code. So this is a public hearing tonight, correct? So we need to open the public hearing, is that right? I need to have a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Okay, thank you, Larry, seconded by Ron. All those in favor? Okay, so it's a public, public hearing is open. You can come up here, yeah, as well. And Kathy, do you want to talk it through a little bit, or should I give a little bit of the history, or do we need to do that, or? Fine, let's do that. Hello, sir.
As you know, this is for approval for a site plan application for an amendment to an existing permit. And what we see-
Can you just introduce yourself so this can ever hear you?
Oh, sorry, Stephen Loffler, hi. Stephen Loffler, 68 Whitney Road, St. Holland, York, 1196th street. So it's the, the building permit application is to amend an existing permit to add an addition to an existing structure. And we've already received zoning board approval for that. We're here to receive planning board approval for it according to the code that's required, even though there were, you know, there's no setback variances or anything like that. It's just the, an addition of less than 50% to the existing bill.
Yeah, yeah, we do, we do. And so you sent this site planted to us in, I don't know, it was maybe a couple of weeks ago. And I think we've all had a chance to look at it. I had some questions and thoughts, and I sat down with Kathy, our consultant Kathy Iceman, to sort of put our heads together, like, what do you think about this? And we put a list together, and so you've seen those, I know we've emailed those to you as well. And and just to clarify, or to, to, like, so you understand where I'm coming from and maybe the others as well. This is a, this is a site plan review and review by the planning board of a project that's pre-existing, non-conforming in a residential district. So that has special meaning for us, that we have to think about what's in the code about that being in a residential district. And, you know, a business operating, and how will that affect the people around you? So that's, that's where I'm coming from, and I assume the others might be coming from the same, same position. So do, do, and well, somebody, any questions? Because I have a few things I can bring up, and we can go from there if you like. One of the things, the most important thing for me is lighting, and I mentioned that in the, in the letter here. And I want to make sure that lighting doesn't spill over the boundaries improperly. And in the code of multiple locations where it talks about what the lighting needs to be and what needs to be on the, on the site plan. Kathy, you're, you've, we spoke about that specifically, right?
One, one item related to the temperature of the light bulbs. One item on the site plan that one of the images is missing, so we can't verify that that would be dark space compliant, although it says in the, companies they're on the lighting. There's also the contours of the property line to be 0.05 foot candles and the site plan matches the candles for the contour for 0.1.
I believe that when that lighting plan was submitted some time ago, actually, I think that was before they adopted, they adopted the lighting, the Kelvin, et cetera, et cetera. I'm not quite sure, but nonetheless, I don't have any difficulty changing it to, I mean, certainly for the lighting, for everything, we're going to be in compliance with the village code. The only thing that, that I'm looking at is that we mentioned is the foot candles for that not to go beyond, I think, will be in compliance with it. It's just, I think that he put those additional, that, that additional foot candle expands, if you will, in, in order, because, for safety and security, so that not because it's a, you know, someone would be walking there. It's not, it's not just for decorative or ornamental lighting, it's for safety and security.
Right, right.
And again, I think that that particular page of this site plan was written before the adoption in the code of these different, so I'll have it changed. I mean, we certainly will be in compliance with that.
There's a couple of ways to do that, maybe, I mean, we could talk about that if you want to, and I'm not sure if you want to have that conversation now. I'm noticing that you're on, these are on, there was a few things. One is you have, you have lights that are, you know, four sconces proposed, I think, that were attached to the, the building. That's, I'm looking at C-1B. And on the lower left in the luminaire schedule, you have a quantity of four, and I believe that's the sconces as opposed to the pole-mounted lights. So it's concept, I assume would be next to, I'm assuming it's next to a door, there are four doors in the property. It looks like four entry doors, but it's unclear where these, these sconces are, so I want-
I, I don't know myself. I don't know what the building is going to look like yet in terms of, I don't know where the doorways are going to be. I don't know, I, I know where one entrance is going to be, and I know that there will be exits and entrances in various places throughout the building. But where exactly they are, I really don't know.
Okay, the, the only one that's shown is actually shown on, mounted on the sidewalk. That's, that's, and that's, that's what I think it looks like, the sidewalks, the, the dark, the dark brown.
I thought he said that-
Am I right about that?
An elevation, there were four that had an elevation, a mounting height of seven feet.
There are three that have an elevation, from what I read, of 12 feet. Then, if you're saying there are four elevation of seven feet, that might be reference to the sconces. I don't see that, but-
Yeah, I can help it. The mounting height is seven feet for the, the wall sconces-
Okay.
On the table. And definitely one is over the entry door. There are, on this, it shows three other entry doors that may be where the locations would be, if those change. That would have to be something that's looked at, but I have to look at the old version of this, if that's something that you would want us to do for it. We're just going to update this to, you know, to conform to.
Well, we could update this, well, when, if we update this, we have to update this for the, for the Kelvin, for the lumens from, what would require updating on this?
Yeah, yes.
No, I'm saying what?
Oh, okay, the, the color temperature would need to be modified to the 2700, even warmer is preferred.
Right.
So 2300, I think, was the, the preference.
But is that going, is that going to change the, I, I like it, I like the soft light better myself, but I just want to make sure that that's going to be sufficient to provide the, the safety and security for people that would be walking within the parking lot.
For the parking lot, I would say there's the elevated poles. And those, one thought that we had was that you might substitute the single 12-foot-high fixture for two shorter fixtures, and then you'd have less light trespass off the property, and it actually might actually provide better lighting onsite.
How about even lower ones like path lights? A series of path lights?
Yeah, I would defer to your, your lighting expert, to your engineer, as long as it's, it's consistent with the old code, and yeah.
Okay. And my response to your comment, it sounds like, that sounds good to me, I, I prefer lower as well, simply because you're, the trespass issue. And, and your engine, your lighting guy will let you know where to put the lower ones to make it work well for you. But that sounds good to me.
I just want to make sure that, the, the thing that I'm concerned about is that the area in the center where that's furthest from any fixture is illuminated.
Understood.
That's-
Understood.
You know, so, like, even with these that appear on this site plan now, the contours, as you say, they appear that way because we moved them further from the property line. And so these contours are the real contours, it's just that the foot-
I guess, foot, foot candles.
Candles, yeah. So these are the actual ones, they don't extend beyond this to the other properties.
Well, the, the lines are not on this, I can't tell, because the lines aren't on here. At least on the one I have. Going back to the properties. Yeah, yeah, but the, the lines don't, I don't know what happens to this back here, for example. I mean, it looks like it's okay.
It doesn't, it doesn't go there.
Right.
These were, we had these here, and they did extend onto the other property, and then we moved them forward.
Okay.
More onto the property, so they look like this.
Okay, I, I, I hear your point.
So the, in terms of the Kelvin, I'll definitely have that changed.
Well, and it's the, the property just to the, what is that, the east? Do we call it the east, do we call it the? South, I guess, I guess, south, so, so if you're facing, if you're facing your property, the property to the left is, is, as you know, that's sort of six feet below grade, their, their driveway. So they would be looking up at a 12-foot light fixture, which is one of the things that we were saying, I was, I was thinking, we discussed, like, well, if you brought that hole down, they wouldn't be looking up at a light bulb like I'm looking up right now, for example.
When they're in their driveway?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, in terms of, or, you know, or, or-
Well, that particular issue regarding the screening for the, for that property was addressed when we obtained the permit from the, with the architectural review board. And in the landscaping, we changed the, the, we put in a different type of shrub, a different 10-foot shrub there, particularly for that in that area.
Well, that's another issue, I, I think-
This was the, this was what was approved for the existing permit, and where are we? Here, these, this over here and this over here, these were, I think, 10, eight to 10 feet tall, and they're a different type of planting, so they're much more dense.
Okay.
So this was the, this, the landscape plan that was approved, as I said, for the permit, and those, that's, that was what we did, that we added after everything was done in order to, you know, provide screening from the lighting in these two particular important places, which is right. Over here, this is all their, what do you call it? You know, this is all open here, this, this is all natural.
Right.
As a matter of fact, I've asked them, and they've agreed, that I can plant the large shrubs in here, even though they'll be on, you know, toward their property, because they're going to be very nice, a lot nicer than that.
So you're saying that this, we already have, the village has this, we don't have this, but I don't have this, I haven't seen this.
This is what, yes, this is what was approved, this is what the permit was based on, on this landscaping plan.
From, from the ARB.
ARB, yes.
So-
So this, this board does have the authority to review this, Mr. Loffler. Because you're here, this, you're here for site plan approval, so that this board does have the authority to review this, review lighting, landscaping, yeah, access, it's a whole list. But they do have the authority to look at this as well.
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad that you, you have, I, I haven't had, maybe you can share this, or make sure we get, we have to look review at this. I'm not sure how we get this, but we need to take a look at this.
We, that's what was approved from the ARB? We have it.
You have it, okay. So while we, while we circulate that, then around the board members, so we can look at that.
Anytime you can circle this too, there.
Okay.
The, um, the man who was the chairman of the ARB at the time was also, is also a, a landscape architect. I met with him on the site and walked the hall, and this is, we had some very good ideas, and we put them into this for that.
Since you're at the, at the dais up here, if I can point this out as well. I'm sorry, guys, we're, we're this way. Parking lot here, cars are pulling in with headlights, and I know you're going to put, I'm glad to know you're putting larger bushes there, because I was suggesting, before I knew that, maybe you extend that fence just to there to prevent headlights from going across.
Okay, we thought that that would be less attractive than dense shrubbery.
Okay.
And also because this, a great deal of this area here, this is, on their property is all natural.
Yes.
It's not, and the house only starts right about here.
Correct, right, right.
So that's why we put these here and taller, because there happens to be a window, and you said we want to hide that.
There is a window, yeah, yeah.
And this, this here as well.
Okay, so I didn't have access to that, so I'm glad to know that, thank you. And, and while we're on the subject of landscaping, it says existing use, there's no use there.
No, where does it say existing? Yeah, that was, that's a relic.
Okay, okay.
This is what, this is, I was going to keep them, and then when I met with Mr. Gomal, that we decided to change it and put these instead. See, all that it was written in here in hand-
Yes.
-was written in after my meeting with him, and then that was what was approved, as well as these hand notations here.
Great, great, okay.
And he didn't like the use, and it's probably a good thing anyway, because the deer-
Will eat them, they'll eat them in five seconds, yeah, yeah.
These over here, like, puts screening in front of them, they're doing beautifully, but-
I saw that, yeah, 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 yeah. And you have a large tree here, actually.
Yes.
Presently.
Right.
I don't know if it's going to stay or not, but that's-
Well, I wanted to move that to here.
I was wondering if you're gonna do that.
I don't know if it's going to survive, it's too mature.
Right. Plus, you have a gas line there or something like that underneath it, which will make it-
I think that's an overhead utility. There is a gas line there also.
Yeah, yeah, I think there is.
But this, this you can add if you want.
Fine, what, if you could give it to Carrie there, that'd be fantastic.
Yeah, we have it, you have to-
Yes.
Thank you. The, I don't see the seven-foot high of the light fixtures on here, where do you, where do you see it on the, of the?
So on C-1B, in the luminaire schedule, the, the table at the bottom left corner, there's the mounting height, so it's seven feet.
Okay, 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 that's proper.
So just going back to the, the landscape plan, so the, the plan that Mr. Loffler is referring to is the ARB approved plan, and does it have a date on it, just for record?
May 23rd.
May 23rd, 2018, stamped approved. Okay, and it's, it has handwritten notes in the table of the changes, and so the suggestion is to update the, I mean, there is a second in the submission for, that shows landscaping, which is not consistent with the plan that was approved by the-
So why don't I just remove all the landscaping from the site plan? Because we already have existing approval from the ARB for the permit.
Well, you have to determine if this board wants additional or different landscaping, Mr. Loffler. So I mean, eventually you're going to have to update your plan anyway, to reflect what this board is requiring, and what you agree to allow, you know, what you agree to with this board. So you're going to have an updated site plan anyway, but-
All right, well, I was, I didn't, unless there's a change to the, if you're asking for any changes to the landscaping, then there's no need for me to include it on the, on this site plan, because one exists already.
So just one concern I have about that is that the plan that was approved by the ARB-
Yeah.
Shows the, instead of showing a proposed one-story addition, it shows the proposed exterior common space. So it's an old person of the plan.
Yeah, so it's, it's-
We need the landscaping included on this plan, so that you have final, we have one plan to look at, right? So that the building department has one plan, yeah.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
Or the final proof that you got.
I can understand how you got there, I, I would have used, like, I would come in with something drawn on it and think that, yeah, but if things, other things change, we can't have it on one, we can't reference it.
If there's something you're correct on, I got it.
Right, right, okay. You guys have any comments on the landscaping or the, or the lighting?
No, I think, I think it's fine, I think if you're going to reduce it to seven foot, that's fine. Is the landscaping already installed, based on that plan?
No, no.
What's, what is seven foot, just to be clear, is the, this, I think, is, there's seven fixtures, three of them are listed as being a 12-foot, and four of them would be seven foot on the building by the doors.
I think if the 12 go down to like seven or eight foot, that seems-
That seems like appropriate work, yeah, yeah.
And I assume that these fixtures are able to be, like, adjusted, you know, so the lighting, the directional
Right.
of the lumens can be adjusted.
So we need, we need, I guess we need a photo, a picture of that on here as well, which is what Kathy mentioned. Oh, the, the, there's a light fixture missing on the, on the chart.
Yeah, that was, this is from, well, I don't know, this was revised many times, but this was from, from 2019, for the permit, this was-
It seems fine, I assume they can bring it down to seven feet.
Yeah, yeah, this pole just gets, gets free use, probably just take that out.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine, these, these are, these are-
Those are good, right?
For, like, directing it directly.
Sure.
I just want to write, so this is sheet C-1C, that, it is in the file.
So you have that, okay.
It's not carried, certainly not.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, and you, you understand what we're talking about in terms of the lower height, we, on, on those particular ones.
Okay, you, you, well, do you want, should I have him, one of your calls, should I have him? Okay.
Have-
If I have light fixtures, they're all going to be the same height, so I might have to lower the whole, I'm, I don't think it would look silly.
All, all, all the one, all the ones that are on posts, that, yes, those will go lower, unless he has an alternative, your person has an alternative thought, but yes, bring them all consistently lower.
I'm not quite sure if he brings them down, is that going to then increase the foot candle contour?
I think we're, I think we're-
Should decrease.
I think it should decrease that.
Okay, sure. I don't know if they're available, but I, I mean, listen, in either event, I'll, I'll discuss it with him, and maybe we'll just, but I happen to like the idea of, of those path lights, the lights.
Okay, okay.
You know, they're about this high.
Yeah, I do.
And, you know, I think, I find them, and they also light up the shrubbery nice.
That's true too, yeah. Kathy, is there a way, because he's going to be, he's going to be spending a little time working with his light person, is there a way that we can? Well, if we, if we make a determination at some point, he can give, he has to have some time to, to get some, something back from his light people. So I just want to make sure that we allow time for that somehow, I don't know if it's-
To me, at this point, as long as it is consistent with the village code, and it works, it provides sufficient lighting, and it doesn't have light trespass onto the adjacent property, then that can be a condition of site plan approval, and then before building permission, you just have to have, make sure that it's compliant.
Okay.
That way, he would update his plans and maps all at once, right? He would, he would issue an approval with all of these conditions, and he found it was appropriate, and then he would be able to take that time, update the maps and plans, she would check them all to make sure they were all met.
Great.
If there are conditions he didn't agree with, he would not talk to you at that one.
So for, yeah.
This is just a public hearing, so that's, he didn't go change it now.
Good. What else is on our list? Could you, can you talk us through the, the waste recycling plan? I only, I ask that because it's, it's marked on the side of the building where there appear to be no doors, and there's appears to be no way for a truck to come and get the waste, but-
There wouldn't be a truck entering up there, but there certainly would be doors back there to, to allow for people to come, and we'll have a series of containers out there that will be brought to the front for pickup once a week.
Okay, okay.
And that area is on the gas station side, right?
So gas station side, yeah, which is like, no one's going to bother that, right, right. What am I forgetting? Kathy, have I left anything off the list?
Oh, so with, going back to the lighting, the same thing applies at the entrance, but you're going to look at the total fixtures and determine if they, you know, have, what would work, and then they're all going to be the same. So there's one on the southerly side of the entrance, you know, it might make sense to put them on either side instead, but your lighting person would advise you on, you know, how that would-
Right, and those, I think, probably I would keep the tall ones, you know, there. But then the balance of the parking lot, I would probably do the path lights. Because, look, this is the area that I'm concerned about getting light to. Because even right now, it doesn't get it.
Timing of lights, so the, the code requires, what, it's half an hour after the close of the, of the, of the building, I guess?
Business.
Of the business, the lights have to go off. So I don't know if you even know how, who was going to be in there and what the timing would be.
It's just the way Bay Street Plaza is.
But it can't be, it can't be like midnight, for example. Yes.
Well, you know, I guess it would have to be an hour after, what is the, whatever the code is.
The code is, is at, at half, half an hour after close of business, so-
Well, and that's what we'll set the timer for.
Okay.
Well, when you say the close of business, I mean, people could work all night, so.
Yeah, that's, well, that's why, I, I, that's why I wanted to have the conversation.
Usually, over at Bay Street Plaza, I usually have them set for, to go off at midnight, but this, I think, would be a little bit different.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's appropriate to, yeah, I don't know, if, if people work till eight or nine at night, maybe I can certainly see that, but-
Well, maybe that we could have one or two occasional path lights- Well, maybe that we could have one or two occasional path lighters that would stay on, well, you know, for security and for just that. That's, that's my concern. I mean, I, I, I understand, I'd be very happy to comply with the code, but I don't wanna sacrifice, you know, safety for that reason. Is this code different only for here, only for this area?
No, no, it's not. I don't, I don't think it is. Um, I, I think it's not for this area.
That's village wide.
Yeah.
Dark sky rule, yeah.
Yeah.
In fact, it's all east, east end villages are all.
Well, I don't think that many people would hear to it if that's the case, but, uh, you know, there's, there's an issue for, of safety involved there. But we'll, we'll find a happy, we'll, we'll, we'll set the timer according to what the code is.
Yeah, it'll all be determined on what type of businesses are in there.
Yeah.
Office hours, and that'll, that'll determine when the lights are.
Right, right.
So. On the tenants.
But it, is it? Liz or Kathy, is it proper to set an, an upper limit for that in terms of like midnight or ten PM or? I mean, I'm, I'm cognizant that there are people who live across the street and live next door.
They get back to you. That's something I should look at.
Okay, okay. Um, but your, your point's well taken, safety and security, I, I get that. And I'm just thinking people who live across, live nearby. All right. Any other comments or questions for the gentlemen?
May I just recap so that I can get.
Of course. Sure.
First thing is, we're gonna change the intensity to twenty-seven Kelvin for the, for the fixtures.
Or lower, if you can go lower. If, if, if there's something warmer, which is, I don't know what that would be, twenty-three or twenty-two, something like that, hundred?
The landscape plan is going to, the approved landscaping plan is going to be included on this site plan or as another sheet. To this site plan, exactly the way it appears approved there.
I think that's right. Kathy, you prefer to have it on the site plan, is that right?
Yes, that is sheets, right now, uh, the landscaping is shown on sheet C one site plan, so that would be where you have the landscaping as well.
Okay.
Okay, so you want it on C one also.
If it works, I mean, it's, it appears to work. This, this site plan that you have, you know, already has the plants.
It does, but it's not the approved plan.
Right, exactly.
Correct.
Those would have to be updated from the ARV approved plan to match this. If your engineer feels that it's getting too busy because it has all the sanitary and everything on it, sure, put it on a different sheet. That would be, that would be fine.
Okay, but in either event, it's going to be the one that's already in, that's already permitted. Um, and then the other thing, as it pertains to the lighting, is the, uh, the height of the. Of the, of the fixture, uh, for the parking lot and perhaps just eliminating those that. Those tall fixtures and putting in path lights instead.
Yeah.
I will, as Kathy said, suggested, I will in all likely, but have the tall ones at the entrance from the street. The twelve foot.
Twelve foot?
Yeah, I, I think that that's important there, you know.
Well, you know, the neighboring property, the Harbor Heights Gas Station, I went by, they, they have lower ones, they're quite bright and they have multiple ones, but. They seem to be, um, effective.
Well, yeah, but they also have a great deal of light that comes from those overhangs for the gas, like, you know.
Yeah, yeah, that, yeah.
I don't intend to have anything like that.
Uh, but from my perspective, lower is, lower is better. Just, there's less, that you're not seeing the light bulb, you know, when you're, when you're standing there, you're not getting that, so. But talk, talk to your person, find out what's most appropriate in a residential zone.
All right, so I, I have three items. Is there anything else?
Um, we have to talk about park, uh, the, the loading zone, I think.
Oh, yes.
You did, you did. Um, so if you guys are, are familiar with this, so because this property is of a certain size, it's under eight thousand square feet, I think it is. We have the opportunity, we have the option as a board to. Not require, uh, a commercial, a low, a truck loading zone. And I think, I think it was thought by Kathy or others, that well, if this was a retail establishment, you probably have to, should have one. But since it's no longer going to be a retail establishment, there's less of that kind of activity happening, then maybe we would consider. Allowing you not to have a dedicated loading zone. And.
I think that's entirely reasonable because of the nature of the businesses.
Right.
Right, this, this is just offices now, right?
And, and storage is some description, but yes, yeah, yeah. Um, but that seems reasonable to me as well. So is that some, do we need to?
That'll be in your final conditional approval.
Okay.
So you don't need to do that tonight.
Okay, okay.
You still have to hear the poll first.
I would just like to make a comment on thanking you for, for making those changes, because I remember when you first came, we had retail and everything else, and it was. Because of the nature of being in that residential district, that, uh, you know, we had some concerns about, you know, retail traffic and. In and out, um, so thanks for making those changes to an office.
I really didn't have a choice but thank.
But no, but I think it's, it's. Uh, it's, it's nice for the neighbor, neighborhood.
Yeah, it'll be nice to have the, the place fixed up in the neighborhood too.
Yeah.
That's for sure.
Uh, Kay, are you okay over there on Zoom or?
If, if I'm not saying anything, I'm A okay.
Okay, very good. I wanna make sure you can hear us and everything's fine.
We just have to see if anybody's on the public. I don't see anybody on, on Zoom.
I'm assuming there's no one in the public who wants to comment on this, uh, or in the room. Kathy, am I forgetting anything or?
So the, um, no, I think, I think at this point, as long as the plans are consistent with the, the village code, as far as the lighting goes. The landscape plan is updated to address the consistency of the ARV approval. And you're happy with the, you know, that there's just gonna be a storage container for waste through that door back. Um, but, you know, no truck access, access to that, if you feel all the comments are addressed.
Um, there were comments from the fire department. Fire marshal.
When I spoke with him this week, he said that, you know, please, everything's gonna address.
It's for address, okay.
I don't know that we need something in writing, but we, you know, we need something in writing, we need to ask.
He sent an email.
Okay.
He did? Yeah, I haven't seen that.
Responded to me in an email.
Okay, because I haven't seen that.
I sent it to Doris, so.
I would, we may have done it, he told me emails.
Right, right, okay. I just wanna make sure that we weren't forgetting his comments and, and leaving them dangling. I think those are the only comments we got back from. Involved agencies or interested agencies. All right, um, so. How might we move forward?
Motion to close the public hearing. And then, um, we'll put it on for, uh, consideration, right, and draft a draft resolution for your consideration.
Okay.
Abiding all the issues, so that everything is in writing, and you agree to those conditions if there are any, or if, you know, as if the board's amenable to move over the.
Okay, so I guess I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Uh, Ron, move to close the public hearing.
Seconded.
Seconded by Larry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good, thank you, Kay. Um, all right, public hearing is closed.
And so I.
So we'll have to come back, you'll have to come back for another day.
Right, and have the, and have the, we will, um, the updated plans.
Yeah, well, I would wait and see, you know, what the board wants to do.
Oh, all right, fine, then I can submit them subsequent.
Right.
Okay, that's even better, because he's gonna be.
So everything is clear and in writing what you need to do in the files, right?
Okay, so is that going to be an approval the next time?
It's up to the board.
So but, so my guess is that we'll be able to look at this, convene again in January. Um, so it's the end of January, I forgot the date, uh, twenty-fourth of January. Um, by then, we should prob, we should have something written up, but, uh, and we'll be able to look at it and, and then make a vote then, is my guess, my suspicion.
If you agree with what, you know.
Yeah, if.
What's proposed. And decide what you wanna do as a board.
Right, right.
Then I can have the updated plans because it's.
It'll be, it'll be a condition.
Right, there's a very short window now with the holidays.
That's exactly right, yeah, yeah. That's right, yeah. Um, but I think it sounds like we're going in the right direction, and thank you for being so amenable and working with us, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you as well, and we'll see you in January, hopefully. Okay, um, do we need to close?
You, you close the public hearing, so you can make a motion to table it to January.
Thank you. Um, I need a motion to table this till January. Thank you, thank you, Ron, thank you, Larry, for the second. Oh, it's in favor.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Wonderful. It's five forty. Oh, by the way, I just wanna say that John Parker did, he's, he'll be speaking through it at the very end of the meeting today. Um, he was delayed by an accident on LI, the LIE, but he said he'd be by five forty-five, but we're gonna move this forward. Just so you know, he's, he will be coming. Corresponds requiring action, one hundred Glover Street, uh, this is something. That predates me, frankly, I think, just, just slightly, so, um, I, I believe what's happening here is they need, uh, this applicant needs an extension of time. Um, and they've been having some issues with the county, I believe, or some, something about. The septic system or the health, health department with the county. Um, so, and things are slow there because of, of computer issues. Oh, okay, wonderful.
Yeah, good afternoon, board, Matt Ivins, Suburban Environmental, so that's, that's right, John, so. The, one of the final conditions we're trying to meet, uh, for the subdivision approval is to gain health department, and as you guys are aware. I think it was in September, uh, the county came under cyber attack, and they were pretty much closed down for two months, so. We couldn't even get in, we couldn't even get in touch with the analyst in charge of this for about two months. Um, so that delayed things and we're met with the, uh, we're trying to file a covenant as well, and that has been, uh. Almost impossible up until the past couple of weeks, so we've been delayed basically, uh, by the health department because of the cyber attack. And we're just coming to you guys, so hopefully request for a six-month extension, so we can get you that, uh, information as soon as possible.
Yep. That sounds reasonable. Matt Ivins, I think, I don't know if you identified yourself or not, but, um, I wanna make sure that the, uh, photographer has your name. That sounds, that's perfectly plausible. Um, any questions for the gentleman on that? I'll make a motion to extend, uh, approval for six months, that sounds like the right thing to do. And, uh. Ron, a seconded for.
Seconded, yeah.
Uh, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Great, thank you, board.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Take care.
Um, okay, Lily's Boat Club is next. Um, gentlemen, if you wanna come up to the, the stand, um. This, this is, um, a little unusual for what we've been doing, but, uh, these guys came to me and asked, were asking, they have an idea. For, uh, for a boat, a ship, boat share club, they'll tell you about, and, um, they're asking for, how do you approach the village, I thought, and, um. I thought, well, come to a meeting, planning board can sort of, maybe direct you in the right way, and, and, and in any case, we'll have, we'll have legal counsel here as well to direct you. So, um, introduce yourselves, if would, your names, where you live, and, um, go from there.
Okay, Steve, just, I don't know if everybody had a topic, uh, I guess the discussion I. I'm Jay Scott, I'm CHIROS. And we live over on one six nine Harbor Road, St. Harbor, and. Sure, it's C H I R O S. And, uh, we own Lily's Boat Club. Uh, we started Lily's Boat Club about, just over a year ago, um, we own a place called Silly Fish Station, I don't know if anybody hears familiar with it. And owned a fishing station, the last one around was built in nineteen thirty-two, and we restored it seven years ago. It's always been a little boat club and fishing club, and as times changed, people kept asking for, you know, better boats, a little bigger boat, something that could take. They're bigger, they want more future comfort, so we decided to, um, to open up a boat club named Lily's Boat Club. It's been very successful, the community loves it, and that's all of East Riches. Traditionally, the fishing station has these little, uh, these giant rowboat stories, which people go fishing on. So, we're used to sending people out on water, um, and like as Jay mentioned. As our business grew, people wanted larger boats than the little rowboats, so we started, uh, Lily's Boat Club last year. And we thought that'd be a great thing to bring to St. Harbor as well, and I wanted to tell you about. So, um. So back when we started this program, I had introduced many different boat clubs that, you know, kind of work for the national network. Um, because I wanted a framework to build my club off of, that I knew was gonna be successful. And it really came down to just one, um, boat club, basically a software that works, and, um, it's on like Carefree Boat Club, it's nationwide. Um, I guess kind of like a training program, a software program, it can help you form a boat club, and you're connected. To the entire network of a hundred and twenty-five other clubs that it should have. So all these members can use clubs around the country, but they will always have a whole base in all these rock by local residents. So that's, that's why we chose to use Carefree Boat Club, it allows us to, uh, boat club to be, we think it's appropriate for our neighborhoods. And, uh, but it still kind of gives the luxury of, you know, let's use any boat nationwide or state club, and that's a big seller. There are very pockets, lots of them are out there, uh, but there's very few clubs that, um, allow you to have your own privately owned club. So, and then, um, so one of the things that really appeals to us about the club is that it's a third of the cost of owning a boat. So the boats in our club are all brand new boats, and, um, we train the people that are members of our club. Uh, to, you know, be in our club with us, so the thing that we love about the club is that it. It's safe because our, our members are trained and it makes board, uh, boating more affordable, so people can get out on the water. Yeah, one of the, I think one of the biggest problems today is that. Rais are full, they're expensive, boats are ridiculously expensive, and by the time you mash all those prices together, it's really kind of. Outpriced to your average person that just wants to take their family out for the day and go fishing, or water skiing, or just kind of go to one of the local restaurants with a boat. And, uh, that's where the boat clubs have kind of come in to fulfill this big need. It allows us to have eight to ten members per boat, so one stuff now equals usage for eight people. And, um, and now it's being, like Steve said, it's really only about a third of the cost, which is wonderful. But it also takes away all the headaches of boating, so there's no more maintenance fees, there's no more insurance, there's no more washing the boat, worrying about it in storms. Slip fees and storing it on land for the winter, that gets very, very costly, I take all that off. So those costs are basically shared amongst those eight passengers, it's kind of a quick way to look at it. Yeah, we own the boats and we carry the insurance as well, and so kind of puts the joy back in boat. And it gives people basically that carefree feeling then to go out on the water and feel like, okay, if I have a breakdown, it's not gonna cost me three thousand dollars. It's up to the boat club to make sure this goes properly for people, so it's been a big success.
I have a quick, uh, question. Um, it's Kay Lawson here on the screen, but. The, it sounds like you guys are ready or operating this under, uh, uh, on a smaller scale, is that true?
Uh, yes, we're operating right now.
Okay, so do you rent slips from one of the marinas, or how are you?
Oh, we own our own marina, we bought Silly Lily Fishing Station, um, over East Riches, we have about seventy slips there. And we've slowly been turning those slips into boat club steps, just.
This is in, this is in East Riches, you don't have a footprint in St. Harbor yet.
Not yet, um, we would love to, this is our hometown.
So my question is just, since you're coming to us for some guidance. What's your, you know, what's stopping you from getting slips and just putting out your shingle right now? Is there something preventing you from doing that, or?
Well, right now, um, one of the basic, biggest success factors in this has been all the clubs going into municipal marinas. Most of the municipal marinas are full or sold out or are waiting this, so. We're looking for ways to help navigate to getting some of these boats into. we're looking for ways to help navigate to getting some of these boats into these slips so that we can open up the waiting list of it. And allow these people that have been sitting on waiting lists to now have an opportunity to actually start boating.
Got it. So to me, but I don't want to speak for the chairman, John Shaka, or Liz Vale, but you know, this isn't, this is not, the planning board itself is not really the appropriate avenue to get boat slips to start a, some sort of boating business. I know there's like other, other, there's a community boating center, Breakwater Yacht Club. They don't necessarily offer what you guys will be offering, but there is Barton and Gray, I know, in, in St. Harbor. And that's probably a different price point than what you guys offer, but I don't know.
Very different, very different. Yeah.
So, but to me, it's like, you know, going through the, the marina. I don't know if Liz has any comments on that or John or any other board members, but I don't know what else we can do as a planning board.
This, this board would review site plan for like a footprint of business, a property, and want to establish an office for this business or something like that.
Okay.
But with regard to the boat slips or, you know, trying to get into the marina, that's all governed by the village board trustees through, you know, their, their boat birthing agreements and, and, and everything else. And like you said, a lot of that already has waiting lists. But that's, you would have to approach the village board trustees, I believe.
That sounds right. They're, they're the ones that control businesses on the water as well. I mean, generally speaking. Have you spoken to the harbor master, anyone over in that group by any chance?
Yeah. Yeah, we reached out to Paul. He seemed pretty fine with it. And he's, and his suggestion was meeting with our mayor, which we did as well. You know, he lifted some eyebrows and very positive about it. I mentioned that we were going to meet with you as well. And I wanted to make sure that, you know, we were meeting with anybody who we think may have something to put on this or say on this as well.
Well, it's, it sounds like you're, you're, the harbor, the harbor committee might be another place to just go and sort of like introduce yourselves. And Kay's absolutely right. And so is Liz. We, we're not going to be able to give you permission to move forward with anything, but we can give you the guidance.
That's what we were hoping for, honestly. We could have the right guidance out of this, this conversation that would be hugely helpful, especially with all the new development of the waterfront by the town. We just feel like there's been such great activity with the redevelopment of the waterfront. It looks so great now. Again, we have access and we wanted to make sure we had something to kind of complement all that work. So that was really our goal was to find out who we should speak to about which aspect of the waterfront it might work with to get something like this in the place.
Well, Kay also mentioned Barton. Is it Barton and Gray? I think it's called, which is, that's a different price point, I gather.
There. And those are all captain boats as well.
Right, right. But it sounds like what you're talking about is, is increasing to a certain extent. You're providing a mechanism to increase access to the waterfront.
Right, exactly.
And that's, that's actually a huge thing for the village in general to consider. And that's something that the people, the harbor committee would be very interested in because it's sort of a key part of what we have called the LWRP. Which sort of, it's a guide to how, how we organize ourselves and what we want to promote. But that's, that's an important thing, I think, to bring to the mayor and the trustees to say you're, you know, let, make sure you emphasize and let them know that you're trying to increase access to the waterfront, not just for those with deep pockets, but for a more of a, more of a normal person, more, you know.
Yeah. I, I, I would just emphasize that, you know, what they're doing here tonight is asking for comments and, and guidance. Absolutely. It's the, the harbor committee precisely because of the LWRP, because as you know, John, the LWRP essentially empowers the, the, the harbor committee to be an advocate for public access to the harbor. And it strikes me that a key element of, of, of what they ought to be doing that at the harbor committee is promoting access for all of the public. You know, one of the battles that has always gone on is to prevent that place from becoming Saint Tropez.
Right.
And, you know, whatever the merits of, of this proposal, it's at least fundamentally based on democratization of the, of the, of the water that we have.
Right.
So I would, I would urge you to go to them and enlist them. I think we, we have a member sitting in the audience even. Enlist their, their support. And there's a guy who could be a great champion for you, as a matter of fact. So that would be my advice.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's so nice. I mean, I mean, we have a boat. We come into the harbor with it. It's not a big fancy boat or anything, but we're lucky enough where we have a place in the water that we bought when you could. And when I come into the harbor, I often think, look how great our harbor front looks. Think about how many people who live in this area and have never even had this experience once. And this is something we can give them.
Right.
Well, so then with that in mind, one thing to consider, I guess, being open minded, that the village might not be the fastest way for you to gain traction. You might consider some of the other marinas. Pine Knack or any other, you know, off Newac Road there that might have a shorter waitlist than the village does.
Yeah. We, we've spoken to a couple of the other marinas. We, we like the idea of being in a municipal arena because it is a long term commitment. We do find in the other clubs that some of our other partners have opened municipal arenas, they just dig. People feel like they're theirs. And they feel like it's their boat club. And they feel like it's part of the community. They feel like they own it. They can help run it a lot. So they've been very, very successful because people really latch on to this. And it's not like they can be sold out from underneath it because the marinas have been selling, honestly. They really have. They've been turning over and over again. And another one just sold this week. And when that happens, we don't want to see it taken away from people. You know, this, this is, you know, at least a five to ten year commitment. And people want it. And they really hang on to it because they know this is their opportunity to get out there and use boats. So municipal arenas are nice because it's a long term vision for our community. I hope that kind of answers a little to your suggestion. We like the idea of being in a marina, but we definitely want to work with municipalities first. We think it's the right way to go.
Well, that sounds good. Any, any more comments for the guys? Kay, Kay's point's a good one. Like the government takes time, you know? Oftentimes, like you have to wait a month to get on, on a calendar or something, but maybe, maybe you do both at the same time. Maybe pursue perhaps some traction with the village at the same, and until then, maybe this coming season, who knows, you pursue other places that are, can, can move more swiftly. I don't know. That's just a thought.
Okay. This is not, yeah, this isn't something we're looking to quickly do tomorrow or something like that. This is a long term vision for us too.
Yeah.
We live here. It'd be nice to be on the half of the circuit.
Great. Well, I, I, I suggest you guys introduce yourself to John Parker, who just walked in behind you. He's on the harbor committee. And, but, but thank you for coming in. And I, and like they, they said, I think, you know, the harbor committee is a good place to go. Ultimately, you're gonna need to go to the, the trustees and make a similar presentation with the way you did now. But I'd probably go to the harbor committee, like they said first. And get some traction there. And good luck with it, guys. It sounds really interesting. I like it.
Cause I'm the first person to sign up.
Right, 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 right.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Okay. It's almost six o'clock, so we're doing well. John Parker has made it to the, to the area. Just as a, as an introduction to this, I know John has, Parker and Aiden Corish have been working on the sewage treatment plant extension ideas or thoughts about how, how, where do we go? How do we do it? But I guess for, I'm, I'm thinking it's for a few years. You can tell us a little bit more about it, John. Come on up to the podium. John's here tonight to tell, frankly, I think John's here to tell us a little bit about the history of what they've been doing for the past couple of years. And also, this is intended as a primer. So we're going to keep this at fifteen minutes or so for next month, when I know Aiden Corish wants to be here and, and be involved in presenting as well and, and actually involve the planning board in some of the thinking that's going on regarding the sewage treatment plant extensions. So, so John's here to sort of prime the, prime us a bit for that. And
I'm a little out of breath because I'm fresh off being in a big traffic jam on the Long Island Expressway. And so when I finally got here, it was rush, 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 you know, to try to get here before you guys closed. But yes, I think that, I'd like to give you some background. So when there is a presentation, I'll hope we find for the future. You'll be aware of what's happened, you know, in the past. It's very informal. I don't have any presentation slides to show anything, you know, visual aids. And interrupt me at any time because I don't know where you are and how much you, you know, you, you know, but I'll, I'll go back in time really quickly, hopefully. Eighteen ninety-seven, the village proposed sewer-ing the entire village, seven point six miles at a cost of thirty thousand dollars. The pipe was going to go down to the end of Long Warf where they had a holding tank, which would hold the sewage until the time of high tide. And then they would dump it. So it would go out as the tide went out. Sometime, we, I'm not aware of, and maybe some of you are aware, how much of that plan actually went into effect. At some point, probably around a hundred years ago or more, they did put a sewer line covering the, the business district. And that was an open pipe to the harbor until the mid seventies, when the Clean Water Act went through and the village was sued and forced to stop directly polluting. And that's the start of the sewage treatment plant. The, and assume all, you know, where the sewage treatment plant is, it's between the Breakwater Yacht Club and and the St. Harbor Yacht Club behind the bushes there. Some people don't even know it's there. It is rated at two hundred and fifty thousand gallons a, a, a day. It has been using only about a hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day. So it's a hundred thousand gallons a day that's of unused capacity. Give you an idea of what that's worth. The average home is about three hundred gallons a day. So this would hook up a lot of homes with, with that excess, excess capacity. Going back a little bit, a few things have happened in terms of nitrogen has been determined to be the, the main polluter in the, in the waters that, that has the most negative effect on, on the sea life. It causes the algae blooms, the rust tide, the brown tide. Around twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, the, the science as to where the nitrogen came from changed a bit. It was thought to be before that largely from runoff, from fertilizer, from farm fields, from lawns. And, and the science has, has, has since then really determined and pointed at septic systems as being the source. Dr. Gobler's recent reports that he's done for the village have said as high as ninety percent of the nitrogen going into the water around St. Harbor is from septic systems. So that means if you want to clean up the water, what are your targets, septic systems? Also around twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, the county authorized a, a report on sewer-ing or expanding the sewer-ing in, in St. Harbor. Cameron Engineering did it for the county. At about the same time, the eelgrass in the bay disappeared. Eelgrass is very sensitive to nitrogen. At about five milligrams per liter, eelgrass stops rooting because it, it doesn't have to go into the ground to get nitrogen. It's, it's in the water, but without rooting, it disappears. Many of you who have been out, you know, in the bay, especially this time of year when the water is crystal clear, you look down and it's a desert. It's just sand. Whereas it's ten years ago, you would look down and you see, and you would see lush bushes of, of, of eelgrass. It's just, just sand. So those are some of the things we want to, to address. We certainly have a capacity. It seems a shame to leave an unused capacity, you know, that that could cover theoretically up to three, three hundred, three hundred homes. Only about a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty-eight properties in the village are currently sewed. And those are mostly commercial main streets, you know, et cetera. But we have capacity to hook up, you know, a significant portion of, of the homes if we use up all that capacity. An unsewered home on a current septic system, its output of nitrogen is approximately sixty-five, sixty-five to seventy milligrams per liter. The sewage treatment plant output is mandated by the county to be under, to be under eight milligrams per liter. And it, it currently lets, puts out at around four. So you can see that, that, you know, the, the difference in, in terms of the amount of nitrogen that would come out from a home that's sewed to a home that is, that is hooked up to the sewage tray to, to old fashioned septic system.
I have a question. Is, is there an underlying presumption that in the biosphere that we live in right now, that the, the septic systems deliver their outflow eventually as time goes by to the water table?
Yes.
And is it also true that there are water tables and there are water tables work on the edge? So when I say water table, ultimately I mean into the bay. Is it assumed that a large percentage of that nitrogen released by the homes is migrating under the ground into the bay?
Yes, I believe the answer is all, all, all of that. But it takes a, a different length of time. And there are maps in various reports that you can find on the village website, which will show various parts of the village, what the travel time is, is, is to the, the surface water. And it varies from almost immediately, before my house is right, right on the water to, you know, one to two years to five years. And I'm not remembering what the, what the furthest length of time, but there's certainly places up here. And they may be a little bit outside the village where, where it's, where it's ten years. But it, it, it goes two places. One, it goes down into the groundwater. And two, it migrates from the groundwater to, to this, to the surface water eventually.
Okay.
Yep.
And, and the point of that is too, that, that when you're looking at the issue of where are you going to sewer? In other words, if we don't have capacity to sewer, you know, the entire village, what is the priority going to be? Well, one of those priorities are going to be the, the properties where the travel time from that property to the surface water is, is the shortest because you're going to have the biggest impact. If you sewer a lot of homes that are, that are ten years away in terms of groundwater travel time, you're not going to see any impact for ten years versus a one year travel time where you're going to see an impact, you know, the following year. Also in terms of trying to decide where to sewer, because this is a big question. It's a question that we may be talking to you about in the, in the future. You're looking at a couple of things. One, you want to have the, the biggest bang for the buck because there's limited amounts of, of money. And when I say bang for the buck, it's in terms of the biggest environmental impact. You know, two, you want to, you know, do, do, if you're doing that, travel time is, is important. You, you also want to, want to sewer locations where other alternatives are not appropriate. Because an alternative here is the, what they call IA system, Innovative Alternative Septic System, which, which has a lower output of nitrogen than the old fashioned septic systems that have been around for years. And these, these newer systems were just authorized in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. And, and some people will ask the question, well, you know, why should we sewer when there are these other systems available? Well, those systems take up area on a lot. So very small lots. And there's some up in the village where, where houses are very close together in the older parts of the village. There isn't enough property to put these, put these with a drain field, you know, et cetera. There are also areas of the village where the groundwater is, is high enough that you don't have the proper separation from the drain field to the groundwater. So, so an area that had two of those characteristics would be an area that you'd give number one priority to, you know, to sewer. Where some other areas of the village where, where the properties are larger, where the separation to the groundwater is, is, is greater and where the distance to the surface water is greater, you give a lesser priority.
John, if I can ask you, we're ten minutes into this. I want to make sure we, we cover everything we need to do in the next five minutes. You've been, tell us a little bit about Um, um, you've been, tell us a little bit about how, how, how long you've been talking about the sewage. Plant expen- extensions and give us a basic idea of where we are in terms of, uh, I know this L and K, if you can just give us a little information about that.
Well, we've been looking at this. At least I've been involved in looking at it since about twenty, twenty fifteen. Uh, Ed Durman was, was looking at this. When, when Ed stepped down from the board, was about to step down to the board, one of the things he did. Was, was asked me if I'd be interested in working on this. He gave me a tour of the sewage treatment plant. Uh, and, and, uh, you know, we started looking at, you know, how we could utilize this, this excess capacity. Uh, Aiden, Aiden Corish, I think, actually replaced Ed Durman on the board. Uh, I was interested in it. I've been working with, with, with him since. Uh, one of the things we were trying to do is, is, is utilize grant funding. So this wasn't the cup direct cost to, to the village. Um, we were, we were looking at, uh, CPF water quality funding, which, which became available in twenty sixteen. And, uh, we proceeded to apply, uh, to East Hampton, Southampton County. And state, uh, for grants, uh, which I think totally pending is something like seven or eight million dollars. Uh, for two of the areas which we prioritize, um, that are known on our maps as L and K. And, and the best way to describe them, I guess, is that is that L is over near the sewage treatment plant off Bay Street. Uh, there are properties that are like behind Billy Joel's house. Uh, it includes the Pre-Cory Yacht Club, which is not hooked up to, to the sewage treatment plant, even though it's next door. Uh, the Sag Harbor Yacht Club is next door, is not hooked up to the sewage treatment plant. Uh, there, there are also some, uh. Uh, the doctor's office across the street, which is, which is not hooked up with, with, with the physical therapy, uh, uh, part of that. So some of those are. Uh, you, you know, are sort of obvious. There's some streets in there, Rice Street, and some others which, uh. Sort of were bypassed in the original sewer-ing because the original sewer-ing was planned to go to, to commercial, uh, of properties. Uh, so there's instances where sort of one side of the street sewer, the other side of the street doesn't because it's, it's residential. Um, so that's one of the priority areas. Um, and roughly forty properties there, also down Division Street. Where one side of the street is, 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 is not, uh, sewed principally. Uh, the other area is, is K, which is, I would say sort of behind Main Street. It's a low-lying area. Uh, it's, it's an area where, where there would be problems, where there are problems right now with their septic system. Uh, because of the high groundwater and where it wouldn't be appropriate for these, these IA systems.
I think with both of those now, and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, are we waiting still for sub, for feedback or notification from the towns? Whether we're going to be getting like a grant for engineering? Is that where, where, where we are?
No, we, we, for those two areas, we've, we've gone through the initial. Funding, they funded first a master plan for the, for the village, both South Hampton and, and East Hampton. And that has been updated, uh, and it's on the village website. That was the first stage. Second stage was after identifying certain areas where the priority is doing the engineering work. In other words, the actual planning of, okay, where are you going to run the pipes? What are the problems going to be? What homes are going to be connected? What's the likely cost going to, going to be? So that was funded by both East Hampton and Southampton, one areas in East Hampton, one areas in, in Southampton. The next step, uh, which was this year, uh, was, was requesting grants for the actual construction, the actual laying of the pipe. In, in, in those areas. Uh, and, uh. East Hampton has approved an amount, uh, which would, uh. Be the equivalent of, of the, of the local match needed for state grants. Most state grants require a twenty-five percent local match. So basically East Hampton funded that twenty-five percent match, which is about a million dollars. Uh, Southampton, I believe it's the same request into Southampton, and I believe we haven't gotten a final approval. Um, yet from the town board of Southampton. Suffolk County did approve for, uh, I believe it was two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Um, the big weight is from the state, uh, which is, I think, it's. It's roughly five million dollars and maybe off a little bit on that, but it's a, a fairly big number, uh, we'll weigh that.
Okay. Um, okay. And, and next month, you're going to come back with, with Aiden, um, and then tell us more about all of that, I suppose. Um, more specifics and things.
Yes. Uh, you know, I think the question is, is again, if we're doing eighty homes right, right now. And then we have possibly two hundred more. Uh, it's a question of where, what, what priorities. Uh, and I think that's a big, you know, that's a big issue. It is also a fairly expensive issue because we're probably talking twenty-five billion dollars to the, to, to the total. Uh, and there's also possibilities of further expansions of the capacity of the sewage treatment, treatment plant. Uh, uh, by, uh, changes in technology, which, which might, uh, allow us to go further. Uh, I mean, roughly, we'd like to get to the point where we could do about, uh, let's say a quarter of the village. Uh, do that part, portion of the village, whi- which would have the most impact, uh, on, on the surface water, groundwater, you know, et cetera. If we can, if we can shore.
Right.
And if you have any questions, I'd, I'd like to find out as soon as possible what those are so we can include the answers when we come back. Uh, or if I can answer it right now.
How many residences are there in the village?
About nineteen hundred. So if we could get, you know, four, four hundred, five hundred total, uh, that would be significant. I think one of the other issues here is important is. What do we do with the rest? Uh, the most obvious answer is, is for them to, uh, upgrade their septic systems to what's known as the IA. Systems. Uh, I, unfortunately, uh, that's going fairly slowly. I, I, I mean, the, the total, and I'm a little off on, I, I got this report recently, but the, the total of in the ground. Plus permitted, plus permits pending from the health department is less than a hundred. So if in five years you've, you've done less than a hundred, and, and, you know, about half of those aren't even in the ground yet. Uh, at that rate, you can probably figure how long it will be before the rest of the village is, is done.
That might change a little bit, John. There, there was just recently, last month, I think, um, IRS made a declaration or determination. That, uh, these were now no longer taxable events, these grants. Um, so, um, that's a good thing. And that may have held some people back. Um, and of course, any, any new construction has to have the IA, not the old fashioned.
Well, and, and again, that's another point because when you look at the numbers of, of, of how many IA systems there are. The, the figure that we don't have and we should get is how many of those are new constructions where it was required.
Right.
Uh, versus old septic systems which are being converted. Because if you have new construction, you know, even though you're putting in an IA system, you're not actually helping the problem. Uh, you know, each, each new property or, or each small house, which is, 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 uh, now four times the size, it can hold four times the people. Uh, you know, is, is contributing to the problem rather than helping. So, so really the only place that you're helping. I- is where a, a current system, uh, i- is upgraded, not where this new construction.
Right, right.
So the number of, of conversions is even smaller than that number within.
John, thank you for coming in. It's very, I have to cut it short because people have to leave. Uh, but if there's any more questions today. Um, we can either ask them right now or we can email them to you or.
Email, phone me.
Get them for me. I, I've had that. I've had beers with you. Um, thank you for coming in. I appreciate that. And thanks for braving the LIE and all the traffic jams. Um, uh, but I, I hope we see, well, I know we're going to see you, you folks in, in January and I hope we see, have a lot more. Communication between all of us going forward.
Sure, sure.
Great. There we go. There we go. Start the conversation.
Start the conversation.
There we go. Thank you, John. Appreciate it. Uh, I'm going to try to wind this through close because people need to leave, but is there anyone else that wants to say anything or anything? Otherwise, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
I'm moved.
All right. Uh, all those in favor?
Hi.
There we are. Thank you, everybody.